You good, Mr. Durham?
Uh huh.
Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir.
Let's make you do what it do. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas Marion Commission. This will serve as our work session, May twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. And as always, we will have our city manager, Mr. Charlie Davis, to lead us through the items. Good evening. How are you doing, Mr. Davis?
I'm doing well, sir. Marion Council, the first item is item one, found on page four, review of the April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting minutes.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Next item, Mr. City Manager.
Next item is item two, found on page eleven, discuss the purchasing FY twenty-three six reels of three hundred and ninety-four MCM wire for the warehouse stock bid, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Nikki?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I would bring before you our warehouse stock for six reels of three ninety-four wire. It came in at sixty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars from Annister. And it's a four to six week medium.
Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir. Nikki and I talked about this earlier today, Mayor. This is definitely the route we want to go with this, so consent agenda.
Consent.
Consent.
Mr. Bailey? Mrs. Taylor?
Consent.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Uh, I'm fine. Consent.
Consent. Next item, Mr. City Manager.
All right, next item is item three, found on page fourteen. Discuss and conduct first reading of the ordinance amendment for issuance of the business license and delinquent property and personal tax debt. Georgia Henderson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is the agenda to come back before you all for the first reading tonight, where we're going to align more with the Coffee County Commission, with the delinquent payment plans that we talked about for the property taxes and compliance with our issuance of a business license. The delinquent date would be December the thirty-first for the city, moving from June. And, um, you know, the plan is to go on a payment plan for the past year, the current year taxes that are delinquent. And they would not be on a plan longer than one year. And if they miss one payment, their, that's, that payment plan is void. So this will be the first reading tonight.
Mr. Taylor? Carrie Ford?
Carrie Ford.
Mr. Bailey?
Carrie Ford.
Ms. McNeil?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Carrie Ford from Pro Temp.
Mr. Durham?
Carrie Ford.
Thank you. Next item, Mr. City Manager.
All right, next item is item four, found on page eighteen, discuss resolution to submit a land water conservation fund grant, fund grant pre-application for East Side Park. Georgia Henderson?
Yes, um, tonight we're asking you all to approve for Mayor Paul to sign this resolution so we can submit the application with the DNR, land water conservation fund for the listed improvements to East Side Park.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Consent.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Consent.
Mr. Durham, consent.
Good deal. Next item, Mr. City Manager.
All right, next item is item five, found on page twenty-one, discuss the bid award on the Gaskin Avenue TIA project. Mike Hudson?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Good evening, Mayor Commission.
Good evening.
Um, this had a very lengthy background. If y'all had a chance to look at it, um, this is one of our TIA-funded projects for Gaskin Avenue. Uh, after we did the original bid out for the project, uh, there was a meeting held about some extra safety precautions on this project. So two things will be approved tonight. One is the original bid, and the other is a forty thousand dollar change order, um, that covers the safety precautions based on ballers to protect the citizens sitting on the benches, which will be part of the streetscape of the block. So that is the, uh, the reason we've got two parts here. Um, basically, long and short of this, this is almost a million dollar project that the City of Douglas will only have forty thousand dollars out of city funds, it'll all respite out of TIA funds.
Good deal. Mayor Pro Temp?
Mr. Hudson and I, uh, discussed this, and as I told him, I'm fine with it, with the city just paying forty thousand out of almost a million dollars. I think that's a win-win, so.
Consent?
Consent.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Next item.
All right, next item is item six, found on page forty, discuss the pump repair quote for the Gunfroze eighty-eight horsepower pump for Bojuela lift station. Mike?
Uh, yes, this is, uh, we had a pump at one of our lift stations that came off the rail system, that basically all these submersible pumps ride on a rail. They're seated in place and they're held there with a pull chain. One of them came off the rail, uh, got the chain sucked up the impeller and the volute, uh, did some damage to the volute and the impeller, so we pulled it, had it sent in for repairs, uh, or estimate for repairs. Wound up luckily, nothing, no damage to the motor, uh, the repair request, uh, is fourteen thousand, please, fourteen thousand nine hundred and thirteen dollars. Uh, this pump's about eighty-six thousand dollars, so it would be in our business to replace the volute and the impeller at that price.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Consent.
Mayor Pro Temp?
I'm fine. Consent.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
Outstanding. Next thing.
All right, next item is item seven, found on page forty-two, discuss the Pike Electric LLC proposal to bore under Highway one thirty-five to Brantley Boulevard, um, from substation three, and this will be the surface of Tilla Park. Mike?
Uh, yes, Mr. Davis said this will be, we asked MEA for, we had an empty breaker bane in substation three. We've anticipated that Tilla Park at some point will need another circuit to feed it. So we got MEA to put in that breaker, um, they got in a little problem with it, so now we need to do phase one of this, which is get from the substation to the other side of the bypass on the rising pole at Brantley. I'll be bringing a second phase back to you guys. We will actually do an unrebuild on the existing pole line that will go down and be dead end for now, two feet to Tilla Park at some junction. So tonight we're asking for a, uh, approval of twenty-nine thousand four hundred dollars to be, just through the bore under the road. We will supply the wire and the conduit for that job.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil?
Consent.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Uh, yeah, consent.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
Next item, Mr. City Manager.
All right, next item is item, uh, eight, found on page forty-five. Discuss resolution to establish a franchise fee available to holders of cable and video franchises. Uh, in two thousand and seven, the law changed, and we were supposed to have submitted a resolution in two thousand and seven. Here we are, just a few days past two thousand and seven, and so when they was reviewing our, our, um, files at the state, they realized we never filed a resolution. So we're, uh, just doing a little housekeeping here, and we're asking Marion Council to, uh, approve, uh, this resolution that establishes franchise fees for any of our cable viewers and telephone people sent our right of way. And, I mean, they've been paying it since two thousand and seven, but it's a five percent right of way fee. And so we're just asking them, asking you to author, allow the mayor to sign the resolution authorizing this.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
Mayor Pro Temp?
I have a few questions.
Yes.
Um, so what were the, what, what were our previous fees that we had established?
It's, it's always been five percent.
So.
We're charging that currently. We just don't have the resolution at the state to technically be charging us.
So how did we determine to come up with the maximum amount?
That's state law.
But it says up to five percent.
Yeah, we've always been five percent, because that's what state law has allowed us to do. And so when they, back in two thousand and seven, I don't know if you, y'all remember, there was, all franchises were local franchises instead of a statewide franchise. Some of, some of the, um, the local areas wasn't participating well with some of the cable providers and telephone providers. So they petitioned the state to do a statewide, uh, resolution statewide, uh, they could go to the state and get one statewide fee. And that's what they changed in two thousand and seven, so it gives the option for people to contract locally, or they can contract with the state, and then the state, whatever's on file, up to five percent is what, uh, they, they can charge. And so we've got some reviews going on now, and when the review company was looking, pulled it from the state, we didn't have our resolution on file from two thousand and seven.
Okay, because I do recall having a discussion about franchise fees, but it wasn't brought out at that time about the resolution. Um, so, I tried to research House Bill two-two-seven. And from what I was able to find, it's not pertaining to cable and video franchises.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is straight out of the GMA manual. Back from two thousand and seven.
Mr. City Attorney, will you see what you see, let me know what you see when you pull that up? Uh, it, it wasn't, um, it was a Senate bill, two-two-seven? It was, it was House bill?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I, I got something else. I'm, I'm directing to the City Attorney.
I'll see if I can find it. House bill what?
Sir.
Two-two-seven.
Two-twenty-seven.
Two-seven and oh-seven? It might take me a minute to find this.
All right, can we come back to this while he's looking for that? Because I'm just not clear why it's saying something else unless they had two House bills, number two-two-seven, would cause maybe a difference in a timeframe that they were voted, voted on or discussed. I'm asking you, ma'am.
Say again?
I asked about why he's looking it up, if we come back to this item.
Here it is, um, uh, Mayor, House Bill two-two-seven, House Bill two-two-seven has passed, House and Senate.
I just pulled it up, too.
And what it says?
It says, yes, to amend title thirty-six of the Official Code of Georgia annotated relating to local government, so as to provide for the expedited franchising of cable, and it's about twenty pages long. But you can pull it up.
Did you type in the year for that?
Yes.
Georgia two thousand and seven, House Bill two-two-seven.
Okay, because what I pulled up was something different.
Yeah.
I didn't.
It was in the one two thousand and seven.
I didn't put the year in. Okay, uh, and so as long as, um, two thousand and seven or whenever we discussed it, Mr. Davis, the providers have been, uh, paying the amount? Okay, the only other concern that I have, uh, I, I'm concerned as to the resolution, where it states a resolution of the City of Douglas through the council to authorize the mayor to establish a franchise fee, applicable to holders of cable and video franchise issued by the state of Georgia. So I'm, I'm a little concerned as to how the mayor is authorized to establish this.
With, and the.
Instead of, instead of the board of commissioners, mayor and board of commissioners.
You could amend the city mayor's issue.
Not on the resolution where I'm reading it from page forty-seven?
Yeah, in the, in the last paragraph, uh, hit the city, city council, the city of Douglas hereby requires the franchise fees are five percent.
This is all about mayor commission.
Page forty-seven.
Yeah, and that should be actually stated, I think, in that first paragraph as well.
But, but this actually came from GMA. I mean, this is the standard resolution they have, so.
Right, but we can tweak it ourselves. It doesn't have to be exactly how GMA has. You know, I was just concerned to that first paragraph.
Well, could they add commission to it?
Y'all can add whatever.
I mean, just to get it.
I mean, to make it, to make it consistent.
That part only appears in the heading.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you, you can amend that to just say authorize the mayor and, uh, city commissioner or council.
I mean, I think that would be appropriate.
That's fine. That's cool. Uh, we'll start by, Mr. Taylor, you okay with that amendment?
Yes, consent.
Consent?
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Ms. McNeil? Mayor Pro Temp?
Consent.
Mr. Durham?
Consent.
Good deal. Next item?
Um, on item nine, on page forty-eight, discuss the library board vacancies. Um, we have, we have four slots. We have three up for reappointment now, and we, and advertising, um, I'm trying to make sure. Okay, so the, 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 they're asking us, and Rodney, correct me, y'all are asking us to reappoint three of the current ones and then advertise the vacant ones, is that right? Right, so we've got four, we got four slots open. There's three wanting to re-serve, and there's one that's just vacant. So the library's asking us to reappoint, um, Sally Cunningham, Elizabeth Cunningham, and Conny Lock for another three-year term, and advertise upcoming vacancy, um, for the next one.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Um, who's here representing the library board? Okay, um, and I think, and I'm not certain, but I think in the past, we've had a little difficulty getting people to apply to serve. Is that correct?
I believe you're correct, yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, based upon that, I would agree to move forward with, uh, allowing the three who want to serve again to serve, and then advertising for the one vacant.
Okay, good deal. Mr. Durham?
Yeah, could, take it forward.
Take it forward.
Take it forward.
Mr. Taylor Ford.
Good deal.
And we need to encourage the people to go out and, you know, come and apply for theirs.
All right, next item.
All right, uh, next item is item ten, found on page fifty-one, uh, as every year, the South Georgia State College has great graduation. This year's on May eleventh, so they're asking us permission to shut that road down, uh, during the graduation, um, um, activities. Just want to bring that forward to y'all. It'll be on May eleventh.
Yeah, eleven. Mr. Durham?
I could, I could agree with it. You could take it forward if I'm.
Yeah, consent.
Yeah.
Consent?
Uh, consent, Mr. Mayor.
Consent.
Mr. Bailey?
Consent.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent.
Next item?
All right, next item is, uh, discuss date change for the June, uh, meeting. Um, as you know, most of y'all will be at the GMA conference, and that's when, on that Monday will be, um, um, the regular scheduled commission meeting. And so some of y'all come back on Monday, some's coming back on Tuesday. So, uh, we're asking for y'all to direct on that. We had suggested that Thursday of that same week, just have the commission meeting on that Thursday night after everybody gets back. Um, and so we're asking, uh, y'all to, to consider June twenty-ninth, Thursday, June twenty-ninth.
Mayor Pro Temp, you okay with that?
Yes, sir. I am definitely in favor of that, because after coming back, we need a little time to rest, so. June twenty-ninth, Thursday.
Twenty-ninth, consent?
Consent.
Mr. Durham?
Uh, consent. Yeah, Thursday's good.
Mr. Taylor?
Consent. You could go forward.
Okay. Next item?
All right, on item twelve, the, uh, the only general comment that we have is, um, Director Rodney is here from the, uh, Satilla Regional Library, and he wanted to come and speak to you about some events and activities there at the library.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a minute to let you know that we're going to start a little strategic plan. And a part of our strategic plan is getting a community survey out to get as many people to give us their thoughts on our library and how we can improve. So I got it posted on our website. I'll send it over to Ms. Thomas, so you all can help distribute it. We're going to write it through the summer, so probably till about mid-August, it'll be available for anybody around our community to fill it out. I'm going to do town hall meetings, so if any of the commissioners or the mayor would like for me to meet in any of your wards, so that your residents would be able to come out, I'm open to doing that, instead of just at the library. That's an option. We're also going to, um, switch over from tutor.com. We're not giving up our tutoring, but we found another service that's half the price, and they actually give us a little bit better service. So besides the tutoring for our young people, we also now offer the jobs now. So anybody that's looking for a job, there's resume templates, the Logovia resume, and the tutors will also give live mock interviews to help people get more prepared for it.
Good deal.
So. Wonderful. Follow-up with Mr. Davis. We're starting to work with an interior designer for our renovations, so.
Okay.
I have a quick question. I know.
Yes, ma'am.
Recently.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, we're in April, maybe, so, you all had an event at the library, and I found my invitation today, and I saw it had passed. What was that?
We had a.
Was it a reception?
Yes, ma'am, it was a reception. We worked with the Wiregrass Artist Guild, and also the local high school, Coffee High School, and Atkinson High and Middle School, so the students brought their art over. We had a hundred and fifty people come.
Wow.
And so you all and everybody is welcome. Will we have a spring or fall art show? I always try and get the invitations to you all to come on over.
Yeah, oh, and, and wonderful. That, that's great. I think you're doing a great job. Uh, we try to, gonna try to get our community more engaged. I'm sorry I missed that, because I had intended to, to go, but I forgot it. But, uh, maybe in the future, we can have our staff make sure they send us a reminder.
Okay.
Okay, but great. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, just quickly, uh, just a reminder, in the morning, at ten AM, uh, we will be having the ribbon cutting and, and city hall tours, so, uh, barring any rain, it'll be outside, and then if it happens to be raining, we'll, we'll try to bring it in here and do some kind of version of it. Um, uh, but anyway, so that's tomorrow at, at ten AM, so, um, reminding y'all of that. Uh, also, talking about in the spirit of strategic planning, um, you know, for five years, we have to up, upgrade our, uh, redo our five-year plan through, through the state. Um, staff's had a couple of meetings, so on May eight, we, we put some stuff into paperwork there, uh, at your desk. And on May eighteenth, you'll see it in your invite inside your emails, but just want to make sure on May eighteenth, um, um, some, some of the elected that wants to come to the, to the regional meeting that we'll have here is invited. So just want to give you heads up on some of the stuff that, that we've been working on, you know, at the quest of the state, you know, what we have to do over five years. We have to do those upgrades to our current plan, so.
Good deal.
Those are all the items.
That's it? So let's take a quick, uh, recess. Uh, we'll adjourn the, uh, work session, and then we will get our guests in here, and we'll pick up with the regular meeting, okay? and then we will get our guests in here, and we'll pick up with the regular meeting. Okay? For that we, once we get to them. Our hearts and minds clear? Let's get started. Good evening.
Good evening.
Welcome to the City of Douglas, Mayor's Commission. This will serve as our regular meeting, April twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three. The invocation, Mayor Pro Temp, please lead us through.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to just, I had been thinking, it's been a while since we've actually had a scripture read at one of our city council meetings. And I failed to get one. However, there's something on my heart, especially with us having a ribbon cutting for our new facility on tomorrow. There's something that comes to mind in the Bible about the selection of your king, of your leaders. I can't quote which scripture it comes from, but I just know that it's there. I've read it. So in keeping that in mind, I'd just like to say to everybody, you know, we are grateful. I know that I am grateful for our employees, for our citizens, for everyone who has helped to make us and to make Douglas what Douglas is, because it takes all of us. There's not one select person who has made everything to come to fruition. So on thinking in mind about where we are at now, where we've come from, and hopefully where we are going for the future of our children, we just want to thank God. Let us bow our heads. Father God, I come before you, Lord, asking you first and foremost for forgiveness, Lord, for sins, known, unknown. Lord, I just want to thank you in this moment for your goodness and your mercy. Father, you are worthy to be praised. Father God, children, youth are my passion. I care so much about our future of our children with so many killings and murders and so much turmoil that's going on right now, God. I just ask you, God, to come into the midst. Lord, put your arms around us as leaders to make the right decisions, God, that you will be pleased with. Father, let there be no big eyes and little use. Let us all know, Father, that we are all your children, and we have so much to be thankful for. And I'm just so grateful, God, for what you've done in my life. Father God, I would never have known years and years ago that I would be in this place. But I give you the glory and the honor, so I just ask you, Father, to continue, continue, Lord, to keep us protected and to keep us moving forward, Lord, to let us know that you are God, and you, and you alone are worthy to be praised. I thank you, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand. As always, we are led in our pledge by Conter High Navy Junior Oral T C. Tonight, we have with us Lieutenant Carrero and Petty Officer Hernandez.
Present. March. The allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. March. Stand. For word, march, uh, right.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the Order of the Agenda.
So.
Second. It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor? But the little girl is just, he's looking so cute over there. He just caught me off guard. Okay. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, I won't look over there no more.
Shout out when trying to dig this up, ma'am.
Hey, which need to add about it?
Huh?
Add an executive session.
Yes. Oh, executive. Okay, got it. Cool. All right. Next item on the agenda is second reading and public hearing, amending the Unified Land Development Code as it relates to mobile vending. You don't want to do the cheerleaders first? No, they're next. All right, this will be an ordinance to amend the City of Douglas code, an ordinance in subpart B, Construction, Land Use and Land Development, Unified Land Development Code, Article seven, Chapter three, supplemental standard section one-eleven-seventy-three, table of permitted uses, section one-eleven-two-sixty-nine, mobile vendors by adding to section eleven-two-sixty-nine, one-eleven-two-sixty-nine, adding section one-eleven-two-sixty-nine and amending sections one-eleven-two-eighty-two, temporary uses, including special events, sponsors, and regulate mobile vendors and mobile food vendors to provide for an effective date for other purposes, often read for the first time at a regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, Georgia, on March thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and read for the second time past ordained at a regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners that property advertising caption is acquired under the charge of the City of Douglas, Georgia, on April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, and this is ready for action. All right. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Some motion.
It's been motioned in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. The Mayor Pro Temp has brought to my attention that we approved the Order of the Agenda without the executive session. We're just.
Amend.
Amended the agenda to include the, well, I'll make a motion that we amend the Order of the Agenda to include. So motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is recognition of Cheerlead's Elite. Here we go. It is picture time.
We get up now.
Yes. Come on, scoot the chairs down. Move your chair down.
I think she's putting it down here.
They're gonna come all across.
They're taking the chair down.
That's good. That's good. All right. Who's leading this through? Ms. Carr. Come lead us through it. Yeah, you come on up here.
All right.
Come on up here.
Hello, my name is Shannon Thomas. I am the owner and head coach and founder of Cheerlead's Elite. These are my amazing coaches. I'm gonna let them introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Trupanica Hudson.
Hi, I'm Siswaya Coe.
I'm Jasha Miller, Coach J.
And then we have Coach Dad Abad, Coach AJ, which is my husband, and he helps out a lot. He didn't know about cheer at first, but now he does, and he loves it. So CLE was founded in June of twenty-twenty, and what started out as a cheer developmental program during COVID, giving girls something to do while we were just sitting home, not really having a lot of stuff going on, has turned into a beautiful dream that was never really imagined, because when I started CLE, it wasn't to have a competitive cheer squad. It was just to have a safe space for these girls and like train them and, you know, so they can go on to cheer in college or cheer at the high school level or whatever cheer looked like for them. So we've serviced over hundreds of girls in this community, and now we're kind of stepping into some of the males in the community, wanting to learn how to tumble, wanting to learn how to stunt, because there's a lot of scholarships that are offered for young men and young women. Fun fact, cheerleading originally started for males back in the nineteen-fifties. So last year, twenty-twenty-two, was our first competitive cheer season. We started out with sixteen All-Star girls, and today we stand with over sixty athletes. And with early registration that just ended two weeks ago, we're looking at serving over a hundred-plus athletes for season three. If I told you that it was easy, I would be telling the lie, because it's not. And without these amazing people that I have standing beside me, without my amazing parents, without the support you all allowing us to do stuff like this, without my husband, it would not be possible. And most importantly, without God, it would not be possible. I keep them ahead of my life, and I make sure we instill that into our girls as well. So last year, we came here as we were getting ready to go to the one. We're back again around the same time, getting ready to go to the one again. The one is a huge cheer competition in Orlando. This year, we're looking at, what, eighteen-hundred teams? Eight hundred teams that are supposed to be there. So last year, we took home second place. We've never competed before. I told the girls, I didn't even think we were gonna win, to be honest. I was like, I'll just go out there and have fun. I don't try to worry about what's going on. You know, we was following all backstage. I was like, oh, we're gonna be embarrassed. But that did not happen. They was calling names. I was in the wheelchair. I was nine months pregnant. My feet were swollen. We was crying. I cried all day. I was just so emotional. And we got there, and they called out tenth place, and then ninth place, and then eighth place, and seventh and sixth, then fifth. I was like, whoa. Fourth place, I kept looking. They were like, your mom's teaser. And I was like, girl, we in the top three? If you gonna bring your home on weight. So they called third place, and I was like, ooh, yeah, what is it? So we finally got to get to second place, and I was just so excited. I just, I couldn't do nothing but cry, because I wasn't expecting that. So I'm gonna wrap it all up and just let you guys know that we're going again this year. We got a paid bid. Last year, we did not win our one grand champ for our one competition. This year, the very first competition that we had in Albany, Georgia, we had a paid bid, and a paid bid means they don't have to pay for anything. They get to go totally free to Orlando, and they get to compete with all these amazing teams. So with that, our Level One team as well, they'll be competing at Jefferson Island at this competition called the Finale. This is Level One's very first year cheering. They've never cheered before, so they had a great season as well. But I'm gonna go ahead and just call them all in, all of them in. We have so many, so these are our first group that just stood right here. These are our pretty pearls. Come on up, y'all. These are our toddlers, our baby girls. Y'all come up to the front. Look, I stand behind y'all. It's all the way down. Go along with y'all to the end. These are our pretty pearls.
Wait, is this the first group? Wait, is this the first group?
This is just the first group. Where he goes.
Oh, are you doing my breath out of time?
He comes to break them all in.
You want to just, what do you think is best?
We're not gonna be able to get that wild shot.
All right.
Let me see if I can get my here.
All right, y'all take y'all pictures.
Yeah, just gonna have some heads out here.
Yeah, come on this way. About right here. There we go. There we go. Do we need to double them up some? We're good? Okay, that's better? All right. Good deal.
Okay, buddy, here, Pearl. Okay, no, she right. Five, three. These girls are both stars, and every competition they go to, they actually won the Diamond Award at our very first competition, which was like, they, out of all the teams that were there, it was like, I think, fifty teams, they won the top performance of the day. Good job, girl. Good job. Good job. Tell them that. And this is back up. That's our brave team this year. We didn't have toddlers last year, but we do have toddlers this year. So this is our number one team coming in. And these are our sassy sapphires. And these girls, they just do the middle part of that. They put in work and beat things.
All of us on the back.
Let's get all, let's get all the smaller girls up front. All the girls up front. All the girls in the back. Come on in.
Go down there, babe.
Y'all scooch in, scooch down. Down away now.
And so I take sure I see you guys. Yeah.
From right there, right here. Just go over some. Right here, go over some. So you got to really do your, little lady on the end. Go over a little bit.
Okay, big cheese.
And I, I went off that guy, gave her something. She wanted to say her name. Deal back. Take them back. All right, y'all. All right, and this is our last team. This is acting partner. This is our number four Diamond team. And these girls, this is like, most of them are my birth mother's gear coaches.
All of them proud, and they turn their hips out. They all proud. They all proud. Martin, if we can get our small hook, y'all raise in the front. Y'all come in front some. There we go. These, where you think you do, which look like, y'all.
That's good.
That's good.
And these young ladies, they work extremely hard. They are, our athletes work extremely hard, but they get a little bit more because they compete at a higher level, so they probably be ready to, gonna be the hush sometimes, but stay on with it. Don't clap to the next time, 'cause that's how stay on with it. But it's, all right. Got pictures. Okay, thank y'all. Shannon's gonna tell it all together. So thank y'all for your time, and just keep cheering, supporting us, and just cheer us all this weekend.
Is this yours, Mayor?
Yes. Is cat walking?
I don't know.
All right, we're good? All right. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda Items. As always, our city manager will read off the Consent Agenda Items. Mr. City Manager?
Hey, Mayor Council, we have nine items coming over on the Consent Agenda, and I'll read them all for you. The first item is approval of the April tenth, twenty-twenty-three meeting minutes. Item two, approval of purchasing the FY twenty-three six reels of three ninety-four MCM wire for warehouse stock. Next item is approval to rev, rev, resolution to submit a land water conservation fund grant free application for Eastside Park. Next item is approval of the bid award for the Gaskin Avenue Tia Project. Next is approval of the pump repair quote for the Gunfroze eighty-eight horsepower pump for Bojo Ella Lift Station. Next is approval of the Pike Electric LLC proposal to bore under Highway one thirty-five to Brantley Boulevard from Substation Three. Next is approval of the resolution to establish a franchise fee applicable to holders of cable and video franchises. Next will be approval of the request for the road closure for South Georgia State College. The last item is approval of the date change for the June meeting, the June twenty-ninth. Those are your nine items.
Entertain a motion. It's been motioned. Motion in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item is work session items brought forward. Mr. City Manager?
It'll be item three coming from the work session. This will be the conducted first reading of the ordinance amendment for issuance of the business license and delinquent property and personal tax debt.
Wrong? This will be the first reading of this ordinance, of what this ordinance does. If you owe delinquent taxes, you can't get a business license unless you're under a payment plan with the Tax Commission. This will be an ordinance to amend the City of Douglas code, an ordinance in subpart A, General Ordinance, Chapter ten, Business, Article one, Section ten forty-six, dis required by a meaning to provide for an effective date for other purposes, often read for the first time at a regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners, City of Douglas, Georgia, on April ten twenty-three, read for the second time past ord. Uh, that's it. Second reading will be on April, well, this is second reading. At a regular meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners, that property advertising caption is acquired under the charge of the City of Douglas, Georgia, on April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, and this is ready for action. We need to check that.
All right, yeah, this should be the first reading.
Why y'all got the dates on here wrong?
But this is the second.
This is second.
This is the second.
At the last meeting, we said it would be read for the first time. This time.
The last meeting was the first. This is the second, and y'all take action on this tonight.
So this is the second reading?
Second reading. Take action.
We need to change that. We'll change that.
Yeah, because on the agenda item discussing conduct first reading.
That's what it says. Let's make sure.
I'm just about certain. Last meeting, we said it would be first reading this time, because there, we had hold off on it before, because there was confusion last meeting.
That's when, when I brought it to you all last time to explain why we're coming back again for the first reading, which was at the last meeting. That was when he read it. It was.
He read it last meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that's.
We need to change the, we need to change the agenda item to second, run second reading.
That's why.
Did they have the first read? Yours say second read? I'll say first.
She said because they didn't.
We got the minutes over here. You all discussed it, but we did not have the first read. This is the first.
This is the first.
Because y'all discussed during the, you discussed the item, and then you all said you had to redo it because you had to put it back in the paper.
Yeah, that's right.
And you had to start over.
Because it wasn't in there.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what y'all said.
That's what happened last time.
No, but I remember because you didn't.
I explained to y'all, so I remember coming back. I was telling you that time I came back, it should have been my fourth, second reading, but because it was late getting the paper, it was already in there when I brought it to you for the first reading. We just had to put it back in there again, but yeah, that was the first reading. He read it. I know the minutes may say something different, but he read it. Now I'll pull the tape.
Yeah, because I remember him specifically saying that this would be the first reading that I would make. Yeah, cause I remember him specifically saying that this would be the first reading at our next meeting. Something about because of the date would be in the paper.
Well, we all have to start all over advertising again because we advertised that their second reading will be tonight's meeting.
Wow.
Cause we had the first reading, so y'all, I don't know.
Well, the minute, the minutes are the official, that's the official record of what happened. If we gotta do it again, we just have to do it again, huh?
I'm with you.
Y'all agree?
But Georgia, even, even the agenda item on, on the front end, the second says first reading.
First reading.
We all.
Type.
That, that may have been changed after.
I said second reading over here. How do you got so different?
Yeah, we got it right here.
I'm out today.
Yeah.
It's the second reading.
I mean.
I said first read. But I said it's for.
It, it probably changed, that must have been changed after it went to print then. Yeah, but it went print last night.
Mine say first read in April twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three. Mine say first. Mine say first.
Look on, look on the regular.
I know, but it's right here.
The, the reg.
It's not even on the regular.
It's on here. This is what I printed it out with drop ball.
Yeah, we might, Georgia.
That's mobile vending. That's not the same.
Right.
Alright.
Right.
Alright.
We need to redo it.
Y'all on the seventh clock, that's not seventh clock. Regularly, it's all regularly.
Six o'clock.
But it says the clock.
Six o'clock. We want to make sure that we do this right. Miss, Mr. City Attorney, what do we need to do to rectify that?
Let's redo it.
Huh?
Let's redo it and get it right.
Redo it, so this won't serve as a, a reading or anything?
That's.
Okay, cool. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna give that back, and we're gonna start the process over just to make sure that we're absolutely correct. You okay with that, Mr. Durn?
Oh, yeah.
Mayor Pro Temp?
Yes, most definitely.
Miss, uh, McNeil? Mr. Tate? Good. Alright, next item, City Manager?
Um.
Yeah, give you a five, what you at?
Next item nine.
We, we need, uh, four twenty again today. Um. Uh, next item was item nine, uh, final page forty-eight. This was discussed, having board vacancy. So as discussed earlier, we have four, uh, uh, slots right now, so we're asking Mayor Council to reappoint three of the four, uh, Sally Cottingham, Elizabeth Cottingham, and Connie Lott, and allow us permission to advertise for the fourth one and bring that back at the next commission meeting, or we don't have any, we'll just keep running until we get, uh, some applications.
Okay, so we need to, we need to approve those three.
Yes, sir, and allow.
Anybody offer a motion for the three?
So.
Second.
It's been motioned and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Mayor Kent, we need to ma- make a motion to go into.
Yeah.
Then we'll come back and.
At this time, I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Some move.
Second.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are now.
We're going to change.
We're going to hear it. Using all this new stuff.
Y'all can stand. We going, um, y'all can stand. We just going there.